You know how good they are.
Okay. You called a planning commission to order. It was. Four thirty-one on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. It's the second monthly, second week of the month being of the planning commission. From the county administration building fifteen hundred highway two, San Point, Idaho. First order of the agenda is pledge of belief.
Pledge of belief. Of the United States of America and if we're in a republic which stands one nation.
Roll call of the commissioners, starting on my right.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Frankenbach.
Commissioner Lynn Scott.
Mr. Davis.
Commissioner Levitt.
And I is Alan online?
No, I don't think he was gonna be.
Yeah, he he was me. So we have two. Two commissioners who are not, so we give them form. So any changes? In the agenda or? Okay, but I want to explain the agenda for those who have seen it. It's a little different tonight. Uh, we have a workshop discussion first, and then at the end of that. A public hearing on a file. And then when that's done, go back to the. Uh, workshop item somewhat. But mostly that's to facilitate. Uh, kind of commissioner Domke to be here to. Of explaining what's going on, so. All right. Therefore, we'll get right into that. The workshop announcement, that's interesting. Um. And. Specific announcements, so.
I don't think I have any announcements right now. I'm still drafting. The. Chapter six and chapters one and two. I I was hoping to get those done today and set them for a hearing date. I don't have them quite done, so. There's been a lot going on with some files that we've been working on, so. Um, I will get those done in the near future and get those scheduled for hearing, so just give me a little bit of feedback. That being said, um. As you mentioned, Commissioner Doppy's here. He's taken the lead um from the commissioner's uh office on this uh. New House Bill one eighty, which we're gonna start discussion today, so I don't have any other announcements for the. Mission.
And. The um. The minutes from the June third meeting, I didn't find them on the drive. The minutes from the June three.
We'll we'll give it to you next time.
Okay, all right, so we won't do that tonight. And um. So this is the, this is the the issue with the uh. House Bill one eighty-one broadband statute uh to any amendments that would be due based on that statute for. Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash four eighty. So who wants to start this out? Is that Commissioner Donkey?
Jake, can you pull up? Your two-page summary?
We do have the uh, we do have the legislation, and I think we have. Paper that you put together. Your app. How it looks like may be the way to handle this.
Mr. Chairman, the um, the two-page summary is intended to just uh. Go over. Current thoughts and intent and make the planning commission aware of uh what the board's currently thinking. So that we can try to be as coordinated as possible. Between our two bodies. The. Objectives, so let me just start with the the broad overarching aspect of. House Bill one eighty uh as as amended. Uh, or revised, I think is actually their terminology revision one was what was adopted. By the legislature that goes into effect on July first. Um, the title of that house bill was telecommunications infrastructure, I'm sorry. Telecommunications facilities and broadband infrastructure. Um, and as you go into and you look at within statute, how those terms are defined. The the breadth of what that means. Um, because they basically they look at broadband and it has to do with certain data rates. Um, and so as you look at that and you apply that to wireless. All wireless communications that are effectively occurring. From any carriers that we, the public are utilizing now. Fall within the definition of broadband. So it's gonna mean everything is covered and addressed by this. Um, so from a very layman, simple terms, right, it's it's all of the cell towers. Whether they're gonna be um large installations or or small facility installations. Um, from something that sits on a one to two hundred foot tall tower to something that sits on a light pole or on the, you know, the face of a of a building or some other structure. They're they're all gonna fall within this house bill based on the definitions that are used from my understanding. And so. The two most important things in my mind that the house bill did that impact our jurisdiction as a county. Will be the um, the shot clock changes that they've reduced the timeframe that we have to. Uh, actually review and make a decision on a given application. And if we do not comply within that timeframe, it's automatically approved. Uh, which I find to be a very concerning outcome uh that the legislature put into play. Um, given the shortened timeframes. Because there are. A lot of items to consider. Um, and. As we know, there can be a number of steps in the process, and so. I think we need to become more efficient and nimble as a county to be able to process these applications. Uh, but do it in a very thorough way. And then the other aspect that that has to do with that is. Um, the definition being so broad, it can cover anything again from a large tower type uh installation facility. Down to very small items that could be uh mounted on any utility pole, light pole, or other. Um, apparatus that may exist within. Um, such as the, you know, an ITD right-of-way corridor. Um, or any other public utility, um, so these things can get piggybacked. That's not a technical term from the from the statute, but. Um, that's what we're gonna see happening and. We, the board, see an obligation we have for the health, safety, and welfare of the community um and what the comprehensive plan talks about with preserving rural character that. We need to be better prepared within our code to consider. And figure out how to make determinations on these applications. So to that end, these objectives that are listed. Um, we really want to make sure sure that we are promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the people of Bonner County. We're still taking into consideration. Um, protecting property rights. We also want to think about all of these other aspects that have to do um with our rural character. Uh, and then we want to make sure and balance with that that we're still accounting for the need to provide access. Um, and there's this public safety aspect of access when it comes to being able to communicate through these systems. Um, and so then ultimately, of course, we want to maintain compliance with both federal and state regulations and doing all that. One of the reasons I put that last bullet in is obvious as it is. Is because there's a complication and from my perspective. Because the terminology that our federal code uses to define these wireless facilities. And what what rules, rules, regulations oversee them. The terminology is different than what the state adopted. So we have two sets of terms that have been used that are in a lot of ways. Um, interchangeable perhaps and overlapping, but not necessarily always clearly aligned, and so. Um, that's gonna get into uh the title twelve code consideration uh bullet list I drafted for the second half of the page. Basically. Jake, if you wouldn't mind scrolling to. And I'm sorry, before I move on, do you guys have any questions that I could help clarify?
What what? The benefit for myself is when we go through here. Uh, because I just kind of glanced through it. It appears that some of this. Doesn't really have to do with HB one eighty.
Yeah, it's a combination of.
And so if you could, if you could point out which ones of these are to go ahead and be in compliant with HB one eighty and which ones are.
Yes, there's there's two primary things. There's the HB one eighty language changes, and then there there are. Uh, what the commission board sees as our duty to continue to pro- um protect and promote the health, safety, and welfare. And so those are the two issues primarily at play. Um, so the title's wealth code considerations, the first bullet, this would be very specific to HB one eighty where we have, as I was saying, um, different terminology and language used between state and federal. And so we need to come up with language within our own code. That really is going to be broad enough to address um all of that, right? Because if. If something gets challenged from the county decision level. Then it's gonna be challenged at the state level first, and then from there to the federal, we need to be able to comply with and cover all the bases. Um, the second bullet. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring my glasses, but uh. Expand noticing to reach um. Right, a broader of um, the parcels that are affected. Um, so that's not specific to HB one eighty. That's more specific to the board's intent to deal with health, safety, and welfare, expand noticing, because. Um, at least these large facilities are gonna be primarily in more rural areas, and therefore our parcel sizes are greater, and we want to get proper noticing out there. The third bullet, if we could scroll, please. Yes. Thank you. So this gets into the application requirements. Um, and so this is going to be um. The combination in my mind of House Bill one eighty. Uh, as well as just again with the board's considering for health, safety, and welfare, we want to have more complete and robust information provided to the decision-making bodies so that. Um, we aren't relying on what gets presented just during a public hearing. But that we have really complete and thorough application so that we can have this plethora of data to review. Prior to walking into a hearing, and we're not just trying to digest it all at the time. Um, because if you've observed. You know, the. Cellular providers, carriers can. Can bring a lot of data into a public hearing. And we're seeing and hearing it for the first time as a part of a PowerPoint. And so the ability to go back and review that and consider that in more detail and and make an informed decision is rather challenging in that environment. Um, so having very thorough and complete information upfront, this is also going to um. Put some level of demand on. The administrative side of things for staff because. Since we have a shorter shot clock to review and come to a decision. On these applications, I think it's critical that, again, we try to front load the information through the application so that. The county has as much time to review the data once it comes in as possible, and we're not getting things on the back end of the process. Um, then the next bullet there. Uh, creating the appropriate setback, so this is getting back into health, sa- health, safety, and welfare considerations. Um, again, as we look at what the uh intent, as I see it of the. Comprehensive plan is with regard to the rural character of the community um and and thinking about the property rights. And then the second to last bullet there, provide um. For the removal of telecommunications facilities and broadband infrastructure, we already have a. A basic requirement for that. Um, but I think it would behoove us to consider. Uh, having a bond or something that some other counties require, so we have a greater level of assurance if there is abandonment that we can actually. Um, remove and restore the site uh without it becoming a cost to the county. And and again, a lot of these ideas I haven't, I shouldn't say again, I I haven't disclosed the fact that. I've been doing a lot of research with regard to what other counties and municipalities have been doing. Um, so I've been looking at in particular Ada County, Canyon County. Uh, the municipality of Dalton Gardens, and then actually I looked outside the state as well, um constituent recommended. As a reference point Fresno County, just to see how they've crafted the language of their ordinances and codes and and how we might consider that, so. Then the the final bullet. Um. We just want to. Again, get into the idea of. I guess like this is a little bit redundant to what I said before, because I didn't go through all the subbullets, but. Having the most information upfront as we can to have a good quantity and quality of information to make decisions. The. The idea that. What I've seen happen in my short tenure in dealing with uh cell tower cup. Is. We get a lot of summary data presentation slides from an applicant. And we have to. Rely on their summary as being accurate and interpreted in the way we would interpret the base data. We don't get the base data. Um, I think it's important as a county that we get that base data, that raw data from which they are developing. Their perspective. Um, their interpretation of that data. And it's not. Not to try and and indicate that we think that they're intentionally being dishonest, but they have a different perspective, and they have a different desired outcome potentially. And so we just want to make sure that we're all playing with the same data to help make our decisions. So then from an action plan perspective. And. This is a piece that hopefully. Um, we can give you guys a a little bit of of relief and. Hope within the challenges of the many things we've asked you to work on, which we appreciate. Jake, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down to the start of the second page. Um, so it, what's happened is is the board has started this conversation. And um, we have. Reached the point where we've decided we've engaged with our legal counsel and said, we're interested in considering bringing on a subject matter expert attorney. To aid us in coming up with draft language to amend the code. And. The intent would be that if we select someone, the board would work back and forth with that one, that individual with staff. And with our current uh county legal counsel to come up with. Draft language to then present to your commission. To get your feedback on that language, to follow the normal process from that point forward before having them come back to the board for a final decision. What we decided we didn't want to do. Which I know we initially talked about. Was ask you to work on language. Then have a third party look at it and then have it come back to you. We didn't, we didn't want to create a process that was gonna be less efficient and frustrating. And ask you to engage in something and then have it taken away and then have it brought back, so um, we thought it would be better to just. Develop what the board sees as a good starting point and then ask you to to go through and do a review on that and make recommendations to it. Or bringing it to the board, for the board to make a decision. Do you guys have any feedback or thoughts on that proposed process? Because we're trying to. Achieve the board's goals in a way that is the most efficient for your body. To play an effective part in that process.
So as I read that, going like number one, it it appears to me you're gonna have this attorney. Go ahead and and potentially do a draft before it come to us.
Yeah.
So we don't have to enter.
Correct. And so that's different than what the board had discussed previously, and so. The director and I were talking, he's like, you know, it'd be really helpful if we can make sure the planning commission really understands the current intent of the board, because things have shifted a little. Do you come and talk about it? It was a great idea, because we want everybody on the same page. And we don't want to try to follow, you know, implement a process that's either ineffective or inefficient. Um, and we don't want to ask you guys to have to go back and forth multiple times. Um, so originally, there was no consideration to using a third party to assist. But um, there's, you know, in speaking with legal counsel, they were pretty quick to say. You know, this is not our area of expertise. It would probably be a really good idea to get somebody in here that really speaks this language and understands what this environment is like. To help craft language that's gonna be more effective, and then my way of thinking about it is great, they can give us big idea that they understand works and plays well on federal and maybe state level. But they don't know the ins and outs of our county code and how it needs to align with and work within the rest of our code. That's where you guys are the subject matter experts, and I think you would offer a lot to say. In addition to looking at the big picture perspective that the outside consultant is suggesting. How does this work within the rest of our code, and do we need to really make alterations to either what they're suggesting and or other aspects of our existing code? In order to create proper alignment and really make sure that it's a thoughtful holistic approach. Uh. So that's that, you know, and and speaking with Mr. Wilson, that was. Where it seemed like that would be the the most advantageous avenue to try to. Bring these changes forward.
Well, I for one, Commissioner, appreciate having the legal beagles do it first, and then comes to us. I thank you for that. Um, one question I haven't heard clearly. Defined anywhere, there's probably no way we're gonna get anything prepared by one July. Is there a new target date we're hoping for?
We don't have one selected yet, and I think what we'll do is we'll probably develop a schedule, a plan to try to work to. Once we, the board has, assuming we do, actually uh select and bring onboard the subject matter expert. Then based on, you know, what their availability is and how quickly we think we can act, we'll put together a proposed schedule and then bring that forward for your commission. So that we can try to get everything coordinated. That's a great question, and I don't have enough information yet to offer you a solid answer.
Um, I think it would be important that. Once it comes back to us with the draft language. That we continue to have. As needed, some access to the third party. Because I mean, we may have questions, we may want to make changes and say, okay, if we make these changes, how's that gonna fly with, from your perspective, those kind. So those kind of interactions, I think, may still need to happen during our discussions and deliberations as we fine tune it down to Bonner County code.
I think it's an excellent point, and I'll make sure in working with Mr. Wilson that we include that in the scope of work so that when we get proposals, that those potential costs will be accounted for. Yeah.
So in the realm of subject matter expert, you have a a legal expert. Familiar with other codes that have done it. A technical expert, I think, would be a big benefit too. Because just looking at the. The required application should provide more thorough and complete application. It's that the first one is factual, but. Are we gonna include somebody to fact check it? Um, the second, third, and fourth ones are very subjective. Hard to, hard to. Put a better on that, and then the last one is factual, but again. Uh, we've had, how many? Cell tower applications that we sat through and and made a recommendation. They all come in, like I said, with a boatload of stuff. We just, here it is, this is what it means, but you're right, it's it's very aimed at what they want. So we don't know. Dave has been the probably the one who's commented most from a factual, from a technical standpoint. On just some of the, some of the uh, the features of the cell towers and communication, so. Not wanting to dump it all on Dave to be that. The terrible techie um.
I don't consider myself to be a subject matter expert in cell communications. I know a lot, I know a lot about it, but I'm not a subject.
Yeah, see, and and he's he's stated that many times during these past hearings, but we still ask him, Dave. So very similar to. When a plaque comes in, it has to go through the county surveyor to be fact checked. Right, here's your closure, right, and all that stuff. Could it be, I I've just kind of offered out it, I think it would be. That first action plan. Coordinating with the legal on on selecting subject matter attorney and engineer. Several people I would hold. Um. Counsel, just so that that part of it gets into the picture. Because it's gonna be huge.
I think it's a great point. A telecommunications engineer would have really specific expertise. Um. And that would probably. In my mind, be a great conversation to see if. Any attorney that we would select to work with. Has such an engineer that they have a relationship with that already they can work efficiently with. If they don't, then we can look for our own. But if they do, then we could consider that, and I think that's a really good point.
Recalling from some of those hearings on the cell towers. Where knowing that that would help their case, they brought in the subject matter experts, but again. They came in. All in with the rope, you know, this is my subject matter expert. Well, about our subject matter expert. And as we always say, not gonna put anybody on staff. So. Uh. But then also, I I guess the other part that stuck out to me. I think the 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 bill. Emphasized that the procedure, the process for doing all this still fits within. Uh, sixty-seven, sixty-five. So that part is there. But they. And that's what they changed as far as the noticing of the decision being. It was the time month of that, but the noticing. They didn't touch.
No.
So.
No, that's, and that's, like I said, that's not part of HB one eighty.
Yeah.
The noticing in my mind has more to do with. The county's perspective on affected parties and making sure that we're communicating clearly.
I imagine, I I'm pretty sure we're gonna have a broader discussion on just the noticing requirements of the title.
Right, I know, it's already on your plate, so.
Yeah, so uh, this is gonna up that a little bit. Uh. But. Yeah, just to have. A good amount of information come into us uh first, rest of you would be great.
Great, so then you, in gen- other than not having the telecommunications engineers and subject matter expert listed in that action plan. Um, if we added that, then does that action plan? Look good to this body?
Sure, I think.
Yeah. I think so.
Okay, it's a starting point, and we can always try to improve soon. Um, but yeah, we are, like you said, we're. It was brought up, you know, we're not gonna hit the July one, it's not feasible. Um, so we're gonna chase after this as as quickly as we reasonably can. Um, that said, I think. Quality of the end product right now is is more important than trying to rush. But it's gonna be a hard balance that we're gonna try to move as quickly as we can. Um, but until we have a subject matter expert. You know, s- um, special counsel selected. To coordinate schedules with, it's gonna be challenging for us to know. What kind of a schedule we're gonna try to meet. So.
I I would. Stink offhand that even to have. Some of this decided and tracked forward by July first would be.
No, yeah, I agree, we're. Uh, at best, we're gonna be months behind.
So then we'll just have to with our own calendar. Look for, because some of these items to bring them back in workshop mode. Just to talk them through and ask questions and so forth, because we will. We'll have to have a hearing on the code. Right. And pass that forward with the recommendation, so. Is is there anything in HP one eighty that similar to the last year's APA that we had a deadline where we had to adopt any certain? If not.
I don't believe so. There's just an effective date of July first, so that applies to any application we receive after that date, and then it's on us to make any changes. Um, I think in the chapters one and two um drafts, I think we did a redline version of that a few weeks ago. Um, we have one line in there that says any broadband infrastructure application will meet. I know code sixty-seven, sixty-five, or something, just to cover ourselves in the early with interim. So, but that won't get adopted before July first, we better.
But the risk, I guess, is that the. The shot clock requirement goes into effect on July first, so any application that comes in after that date would be subject to that shot.
Yeah, yeah, regardless of our ordinance, that's effective for it, so.
Right.
And I, we can't craft a more stringent standard or, or you know, a less stringent standard than that.
Right.
I don't recall seeing anything myself that anybody else in the planning department or you, Commissioner, when you were going through um. Our code. You know, obviously reviewing it, wanting to beef it up, this could be as possible, but anybody identify any. Um, oh craps, so to speak, when we went back and looked at our code, when this little thing popped up and went, oh my God, I didn't realize we've got. This glaring hole in our process today that. You know, perhaps we might want to try and fill sooner than later while we take six months to rewrite the whole thing.
It's a great question, um. I think there may be some items that we're gonna find to be really helpful. Whether or not. It'll be, I guess, when we, we'll be better understand and plot what the full schedule looks like, we we can then make that decision to determine if it should be a two-phase process or a single phase. I think it's a great question. The. You know, going through the process right now. On a cell tower C and P, it's. I don't, there's. Nothing that I believe is. On its face problematic with the way the current code is written. It's just so sparse with requirements. That it gives us little grounds to make a decision. And that's the part right now that's. Um. Challenging. You know, as the decision-making body to have such little grounds to use for those decisions. When we have applicants bringing in. This plethora of information and. Essentially trying to overwhelm us with information to say. You know, we have a winning case that you can't challenge. You know, we have a winning case that you can't challenge, which is pretty much how they present it.
We also, we have a, we have a fairly subjective standard in there by necessity. Which has been interpreted by different boards in different ways, so I think as we go through these and we look at beefing those up. Getting less subjectivity in there and more definitive. I know I hear that from the board, like, well, this is way too subjective, like, how do we know? It's like, oh, okay, so we need to craft better standards for which they need to be reviewed against and getting rid of some of the subjective standard.
Yeah, that's a great, if nothing else. We talk about different criteria. If we added definitions to to tell us how to interpret that criteria, so it is less subjective, that would be. Extremely helpful. The one thing I've seen in some other jurisdictions codes that I was the most impressed by was robust definitions. So that we weren't relying on Merriam-Loeb's dictionary to try to figure things out. We were saying, no, this is. This is a technical matter, and we want a technical definition instead of a generic.
A good, a good, or a good reason or a good definition there. You look in the state statute, this new one that's being adopted. Um, this reasonable amount of time sounds super subjective, and then they went on there to find exactly what I meant. So you can take that idea, we're gonna put in there like, they have to show a necessity. You know, for this specific use of necessity is this, it's like a reasonable amount of time is this, and they give very clear guidance in that definition, so. You know what you're talking about?
Yes, thank you. Is there any um sense of a clearinghouse of information statewide and how others are are dealing with this? You mentioned you put it some already, but.
So I've not seen anyone that's um actually proposed a draft amendment to their code. I'm just looking at what codes are already in place, so we're all behind the eight ball.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just looking at counties that have codes that are significantly more robust than ours. And so just trying to look at what they've done already. And I can see where. It's my un, you know, unprofessional, unexpert perspective that they have a lot of work to do to get theirs. To become more useful in the new environment that HB one eighty is creating. And we're just further behind than they are. Uh, but they have some things, like I said, some of them have really robust definitions, some of them have differentiated between. Um, large tower installations and small wireless facilities. Because there are different nuances to consider, and so they've intentionally separated and differentiated the requirements for each of those, both in the application itself. And then the citing and design requirements. Uh, so there's. A lot of thoughtful work that other municipalities have done that I think we could really. Just good, you know. I I started working on a. On a draft of just like, what are the things we should be thinking about and grabbing and borrowing language from all sorts of places? And then what I found was. Again, not being an expert, but. I was then seeing the need to amend most of the language just because. It didn't work with our code's language, or it was even more generic of a definition than I would like. And because again, I didn't want a textbook definition, I wanted something that was purpose-built for the application. And so I was finding myself rewriting definitions that other municipalities had created. You know, I'll give you an example, the um, the idea of using. A balloon, right, to do a visual study. Or they would say, you know, it may, it may be helpful, it may be required, the balloon might be from this size to this size. I'm like, no, it's gonna be a five-foot diameter. Red balloon is gonna be flown, you know, at the exact height of the proposed tallest point, but like. It was just, like, why would this be arbitrary? We we have, we know the intended use of this term, so let's define it based on that technical analysis. Um, it's tied to the bottom, so. In any case, right, that's. Over overarching intent um. The, this is. A desire and a level of. Importance that's shared by the full board. Um, and so we're all driving in the same direction.
All right. Any further questions for the commissioner?
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, so that. Ends the workshop session so far. Um, you didn't ask if anybody in the audience had any thoughts, yeah, right. Uh, I'm sure, I'm sure you will, you'll be plenty of opportunity.
But let's say, um, after the hearing item, you have a public comments as an agenda item number four.
Oh.
Oh, typically have those at the beginning, but again, I wanted to expedite Mr. Donkey's.
All right, so we'll we'll get into that, okay, we'll.
And then again, I added this again later at the agenda in case you guys wanted to discuss it for.
Right. Yeah, all right, thank you. So now we're in public hearing mode. So. Is that? Uh, when Daniel's got it, that page that explains the hearing process?
I do, very good.
So. This is the start of the public hearing. For this file, which is AM zero 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 one dash twenty-five comprehensive plan map amendment. Uh, rural residential to transition. On a property located on Highway ninety-five, East Twoford Road in section thirty-six, Township fifty-six north, range two west, Boise, Meridian. So as you can see on the board, there's the process for going through a public hearing. Staff report. Applicant provides an overview, public testimony. In those various forms of testimony. Uh. We'll see about the three minutes. For limitation of the public's testimony. Putting in exhibits into the staff, so forth. Uh, applicant can then respond rebut to anything that was said during the public testimony. After that, the public testimony will be closed and the hearing will continue for deliberation. So first off, tempets.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Daniel Britt, finding staff for the record, um, so we'll get started on this file and gonna draw your attention to staff report. So there's a couple of corrections that need to be made aware of before we get started. So on page four seventeen, or sorry, page four. Under agency comments, where it says no comment, Pennant Health did actually submit a comment, so that just got typed in the wrong place. And then drawing your attention to page thirteen. That should say findings of facts and not conclusions of law.
Oh, yeah, he's had a C P. C P, oh, that's the board of man, that was the one that's there, that was the board of county commissioners, you're signed in the.
Okay, so. We're on scene page now. Hey. Hey, Commissioner, so here's discuss AM zero 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 one dash two five. Uh, compliant map amendment from rural residential to transitions. These are the following standards for which this file was reviewed against. The applicants are requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment from rural residential to transition. The purpose of the request is for a future uh zone change request. Proposal is approximately three point two five acres. Properties located on the southeast corner of Highway ninety-five and East Twoford Road. In Segal, Idaho. Section two Township fifty-six north, range two west, Boise, Meridian, Boise County. Bonner County, Idaho. This is taking a look at uh on the left. That intersection and then well, the image on the right is a little bit closer up. Just to give it some perspective where we are this evening. So the current designation is rural residential. The rural residential area provides for residential development in areas where urban services are not available and slopes may vary up to thirty percent. These areas include hazardous areas, critical wildlife habitats, with lower density, reduce potential impacts to resources and exposure to. Loss of property or lives, small-scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. So the proposed designation is transition. Transition classification is reserved for those areas of the county where a mixture of land uses can occur. Which may include higher-density residential development uses, commercial, industrial, light industrial uses. Due to the tendency of the land use, these areas require primary transportation routes, urban-like water and sewer services, fire and police services. Some background on this parcel. It is unplanted, it's approximately three point five two acres, is currently zone rural five and has a land use designation currently of rural residential. Access to the parcel is from Old ninety-five and East Twoford Road. The environmental factors on the property, the site does contain map slopes from zero to thirty percent or above. The site does not contain map wetlands. The site does not contain map lakes or streams. Parcel is within special flood hazard area zone X. For firm panel. Number one, six, zero, seven, C, zero, nine, five, zero, E, the effective date of eleven eighteen of oh nine. There is one soil type found on this parcel, it is a boner gravelly ash silt well. Uh, zero to four percent, it is well-drained and is considered all areas of prime farmland. Services currently at site is an individual well, an individual septic system, it's within the Segal Fire District. Uh, powers provided by this utilities and is within Lake Ponton Ray's full district number eighty-four. So services at the property, the proposal is currently adjacent to one parcel designated transition and is adjacent to an Idaho State. Highway and. BNSFA or BNSF railroad tracks. Approximately quarter mile south of the proposal are two parcels that are comprehensively planned transition. And approximately three quarters of a mile south is a square mile land that is currently designated transition. Transition, transition designation requires fire and police services. Parcel is within the jurisdiction of Bonner County Sheriff. And the Segal Fire District. In addition, the parcel contains an individual well and septic system. The area of the county does not have urban services available for water and sewer, however, hard surface roads, electrical power and cell phone facilities. Are in the area. This is a bigger picture of the area just described, so you can see the south, the transition that's. South, the arrow pointing um in that image is pointing at the proposal tonight. And it's surrounded by rural residential. The transition map designation definition requires parcels, parcels to have transportation routes. Rural residential transportation does not address transportation requirements, however, the land use matrix of the current. Two thousand and five adopted land use component page twenty-two, note one and note three as general transportation choir. Criteria for the rural residential and transition classifications. For the rural residential roads generally can. Be to. Be to a public right of way, pay for gravel, private easement, and meet the international fire code standards. Transition generally. Can be found. Can be hard surface, major minor collectors, frontage, US highways. Principal architillaries and public right of ways. The proposal is adjacent to Highway ninety-five, which is a mapped primary road. Old Highway ninety-five is a map local road. And East Twoford Road is a map secondary road. This is looking at that transportation service. Uh, the highlighted greens are publicly are sorry, Bonner County owned and maintained roads. Um, so the railroad to the east of the proposal and Highway ninety-five to the west. So slopes, the transition land use designation definition does not consider slopes on the properties, however, the proposed land use. Matrix table found in the current two thousand and five adopted land use component page twenty-one indicates that slopes of zero to ten percent. Are appropriate on properties. The role. Residential designation is appropriate where slopes may vary up to thirty percent. Maps slopes on this parcel appear to be up to and above zero to thirty percent. Parcel appears to be generally flat and any map slopes on the parcel appear to be trees, structures and or street, street ditching. So this is taking a look at that slope layer, we talked about this. Street ditching, it's along this portion here. Um, this area we're showing slopes of fifteen, thirty percent appear to be. From a shadow on that building. And these are all appear to be treetops. So hazardous areas, the adopted hazardous area component. That was adopted February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, page five, map indicates that this area has slopes of zero to fourteen percent rise. We already discussed slopes earlier, the avalanche hazard map on page seven indicates that this area has. Has a low hazard. Area, this component does not have a map. Including a flood plain for the this area, however, the Bonner County internal map view does not indicate that the proposal is within a floodway or flood plain. Image on the left is the general area with the red arrow pointing at it. Um, that is the slope hazard area in Bonner County or or Bonner County that's found in the cop lab. For hazardous areas, and then the image on the left is showing that there's not any map floodway or flood hazard zones. Critical wildlife. The proposal does not contain any mapped wildlife. The current, the currently adopted natural resources component from March thirteen twenty-four, page twenty-one, quote. Of all the endangered and threatened species of plants and animals is classified by the US Fish and Wildlife Service, Bonner County. Is designated a critical wildlife habitat for bull trout only, like ponder rays are approximately seven miles away as the code flies. This is taking a look at the proposal, it's getting the red arrows pointing to. Um. The property and. All the pink that you see there is Lake Ponton River Bull Trout habitat. Small agricultural uses, the current use of this property was found in an error statement, it's currently. A small-scale home-based business selling agricultural-based products. For example, roundworms and eggs. Assume those would be chicken eggs, not. Red worm eggs, but I don't know worm eggs. It'd be, uh, these are the following agencies. That replied with comment, just the Bonner County Civil Society, Idaho Department of Transportation. Department of Environmental Quality, Urban Lights Incorporated, as well as Canada Health District. Yeah. There was a late comment that came in on June sixteenth from Idaho Fishing Game, uh, that isn't included. In your pamphlet this evening. Um, they commented that they had no comment. These are the findings of facts as found in the staff report. That concludes my presentations, Commissioners, I can take any questions you might have.
I have a question, if 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 Steph does not, I. I'm Dawn Mike May, the old Highway ninety-five, I can't remember if that. If the state retained that easement through there, or did they go ahead and uh? Ran it back. I know the county has been maintaining it. But I know they're also maintaining a lot of these state highways such as Coburn Cobra Road. Molly Road. Are all state easements. So I don't know if old Highway ninety five. Actually owned by the county or is it still a state easement? Can maintain.
Even conversations I've had with Matt Mulder in the past on the. That old High Highway ninety five um, was deeded over after the adoption of ninety five.
Okay. Otherwise, we would have kept us a business route or something. And then I think. Perhaps the county abandoned it north of East Twoford. That's totally private use and. Okay.
Hey, I can't remember. Some of the comments that received that were somewhat pertinent to what we're going to discuss tonight. We're going to cover those somewhere else?
Or those should be included in.
I know what I've seen. I just wasn't sure if they were going to be presented tonight or we're going to wait until we just bring it up in our discussions.
I believe that's part of your deliberations, commissioners.
Hey, any other questions for staff? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Riff. Now, Mr. Grimm can come up and explain further.
Good evening, Commissioners Jeremy Grimm, uh. Wonder Whiskey Rock Planning Consulting, uh, representing the applicant here. Um, Wayne and Kimberly Miller. Uh, thanks for your time tonight. Thanks for staff for the report. Um, yeah, so this is a. A real opportunity here for the Millers here. Um, if you're familiar with the site, which I assume you are. The whole corridor is um, transitioning a little bit. We've got some transition and commercial zoning directly abutting to the south. Uh, further south, um, we've got uh, a fair amount of transition and rural service center. And then even to the north, um, on the west side of ninety five, we've got some county facilities that are, uh, even though they're designated rural residential. Uh, they are actually commercially zoned, the emergency management facility and the um, the waste uh, reception facility there. This um, this request here is a conservative approach. The applicants um, are longtime Bonner County residents and. Um, when I explained how you go through this process, we want to make sure the comp plan alliance before we go for a zone change. But the ultimate goal is a zone change here to commercial. Um, for the express uh, purpose of allowing uh, the Millers to proceed with the development of a business that they think is needed in the area. Um, imagine you're out at Mirror or Round or um, uh, any of the other lake Shepherd Lake out there and it's. Early in the morning or the sun's about to go down and you see a eighteen inch trout and you cast and. You get snapped off and you're like, God, he's hungry. I want to go back. Well. Right now, uh, for tourists and residents in the area, the idea of going all the way out and up to Ponderay to Walmart or someplace to find fishing tackle. Um, or likewise hunting tackle. If you're out there, you know, hunting archery or whatnot in the state lands. Uh, this seems like a really appropriate place for um, the development of a bait and archery shop basically. Um, they, they see a lot of um. You know, folks moving through this intersection currently it um, is along a corridor that is. Uh, you know, changing as as time goes on here and um, you know, ultimately it's very visible. Um, when we look at uh, the characteristics of the site, you know, rural residential. Uh, first of all, this parcel is less than the five acre minimum for that designation. Secondly. It is kind of sandwiched between, you know, Duffer ninety five and the railroad. So it's it's not very rural in any aspect. And um, again, looking at uh, what they hope to do there is um. Uh, eventually come back in for a uh, zone changed commercial to allow the expansion of uh, and development of this. Uh, bait and archery and tackle tackle shop servicing um, folks in the area. So uh, when you look at uh, you know, what is the, you know, intent of the transition? Um, when you look at that, um. And you look at sort of what you're comparing this to for the comp plan and and uh, the first couple of things per twelve to fifteen B is. Um, how's it going to affect? Um, you know, noise, light, glare, odor. Uh, adjoining property owners, um, is it compatible with the adjacent land uses and. Uh, that relationship to the comprehensive plan. So when you look at that, uh, those opportunities out there. Um, you know, it fits pretty well with the nearby zoning. Um, it is located abutting to uh, commercial lands. Um, as I mentioned, just to further west and north, uh, there are other higher intensity uses. Um, to the south, we've got some manufacturing, industrial lands. Um, when you look at the comp plan and you talk about the recreation component. You know, this, this amendment would allow um. The property to have a positive impact on recreation opportunities in Bonner County. Um, presently, there's no bait tackle and archery services. Within a reasonable drive of all these federal lands and state lands and and these lakes. Uh, beyond that, um, without this change, it's it's pretty difficult for the Millers to expand their operation. They're currently um. You know, growing red worms. Um, uh, they distribute them to North Forty and places like that for fishing. And they do direct sales of tackle and um, would like to get into some of the archery and some other things there. Um. And then I guess I'd close by just saying, when you look at that, that rural residential versus um, the reality of what is there today. Um, I think uh, pretty much everyone would agree that that's, that's not a very rural uh, area. Uh, at the intersection of Duffer and ninety five and old ninety five. So um, you know, with that, uh, we would stand for any um, any questions that you have regarding to public comment. I think it might be uh, good for uh, Wayne to just come up for a second, just describe sort of where he's been and his vision there and. Uh, introduce himself. So Wayne, if you have, you just want to say hi, uh, so they can personalize this a little bit.
You can use this microphone up here. It's just reporting it.
And just say your name for.
Uh, Wayne Burkhart and my wife's Kimberly Miller and just. Got big dreams for the place and. Been sharing with the community and people around us that what we want to do, like we said, we supply in those forty and. A lot of the other stores, we're starting to supply with worms all the way up to Priest Lake and. Over towards Newport and and then up to Bonners, we're supplying worms for them and growing them and seems to be doing really good. People seems to be excited about it. And the community is just seeming real happy that we're what we're considering and what we're wanting to do to. Have, you know, with the fishing wildlife and. That activity. That's our, our plans, you know, and then maybe later, you know, growing more into the sporting camping, supplying more stuff like that for the. The kayakers and people coming through. So just let it grow as it, as it seems fit. Yeah.
Thanks. Any questions for Wayne?
Yeah, one question. Got it. And this, it's a. It's a topic. It's not even a question really, or even for any kind of a, uh, what you're going to do with this, but. The ITD comment that came, you've probably seen it. Uh, from Rob Peachler.
Yeah, the future corridor.
Yeah, the future corridor. Are you aware of what may be coming someday?
Yes, we, we, we've heard about that. My wife, my wife Kim, she's been here a lot longer. You can tell the accent. I ain't been here as long as. I'm Kentucky, yeah, but I come out here and me and Kim got married and. And you know, this to me is just a big God thing too. I gotta put God in this for a minute, but we, uh. She said, you know, they've been talking this for years and years. So, you know, probably eventually, yeah, it's going to happen and. But it seems that it's been going on for a very long time over.
Yeah, I've lived there since nineteen sixty eight and. Ever since I was a little girl and been hearing that they're coming through. So it's like. We're like, okay, here they come. Okay, not yet. Here they come. Not yet.
It's, it's like anything. It's closer today than it was yesterday.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, and it may be, who knows? They, they're certainly not saying. Did ten years or five or fifteen or anything, but they are taking more steps to look at it, think it through and make changes to what was approved back in two thousand ten. So just, yeah, beware of that. That's.
Yes, yes.
That was their advice. Just make sure you're aware of.
Yeah, Commissioner Davis, to that point and speaking with um, Wayne Kimberly, they, they intend to, you know, grow this business and start this business out of existing structure. So. They're not planning on putting up a, a real fancy building and. Causing a headache. Um, but um. Yeah, that's.
No matter what happens with an interchange there, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe proof of concept and maybe they can find another spot.
Yeah. All right. So any other questions for? Mr. Grimm or the applicants?
Nope. All right. Thank you very much, commissioners.
So any public testimony? Or or against or neutral, whichever you want to do? For this?
You should say no, Dave.
I did.
German, Dave.
And we have two. No, we have one.
Don't be here all week, folks.
Get it to your right side.
Okay, well, let's see what Karen has said.
Karen Kelly, Bonner County resident. Jake, can you bring up? A little farther down to Kokalala, the whole map. With the zoning. And I don't have anything against what your business is. I used to have a little store and I'd have to drive down to Silverwood to get worms. I wish you would have been there. Um, I just have. I'm curious. Have a couple of questions. Um, this is our property. These two. Probably were in rural and changed to rural service center. Um, back in April of twenty four. I don't know if a comprehensive plan amendment was done with that. Mr. Grimm may know. And then, uh. Let's see. I think. Is this Mr. Helms? We're trying to revoke the. RV, RV. And so I just want to bring to your attention that I know what their uses are planned for now. We don't necessarily know what they'll be in the future. Um, there's another one. Uh, Jake, I don't know if I'm point right. RP five five N O two W zero five. One, zero, one, one, A for Sean and Christina Gavin. And it was five point nine three acres that asked for a zone change. Because of a construction business when they applied for it. And it's back. Now they're asking to do a seventeen space RV park. Jake, can you bring that up for me? That parcel?
Yeah, I, I work.
Okay, can you just to see it? So, so just so you know, the uses can change. And I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
And the, the parcel directly south of those, that one there, I don't think. That is, uh.
That's the other RV park.
Yeah.
Currently an RV park.
Hester.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not Helms. Helms was due south.
Yeah.
Which I think was abandoned or changed.
Isn't that right next to?
No, that's the applicant there was Hester.
Hester.
I don't know what's happening in your side of East Twoford. I know it's happening. Still residential. My attempt, but. Another discussion for the day. Okay, I haven't come inside, fine. Yeah, um. Suzanne is, I think here for this. Uh, so I don't know if she's got any. She's got, you know, two thousand twelve. Any further? No further comments come to public? Uh. Anything therefore, Mr. Grimm, the applicant want to?
Yeah.
There's already bottled, I don't think.
Doesn't much really. Just uh, want to emphasize that the applicants, you know, this is a go slow approach. I, I can't imagine how many uh, pounds of worms they'll have to. Sell to break even on this. It's uh. Uh, I might do a, a little trade and, and uh, uh, a barter there, but um. Yeah, no, thi- this is a slow go, a go slow approach. Um, see if the comp plan can get changed to transition and then we'd be back in front of the zoning commission for a, a request to go to commercial. So, um. Yeah, I think, um, I think it speaks for itself. Um, good site, good visibility. Um, you know. Um, yeah, we'll leave it with that and uh, thanks for your consideration.
So therefore close the public testimony portion of this here and get to deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask staff to go ahead and pull up. Cause I'm, if I'm not mistaken, you know. We already. Propose. It's complan change on the serious two. I'd like to refresh my memory.
Where does it sit?
We did, yes. It's the same spot. We already.
Yeah.
Changes anyway.
I think so.
So, yes, I. That's right. I think in the, in the draft land use component, but given that that hasn't been adopted by the board, it really shouldn't weigh in on your decision. You should. You should review this against the policies of the comp plan as shown in the standing board. So. We've actually been specifically requested by the board on both zone changes and initially use per, sorry, and um. Complant map amendments not to consider a pending a lit or a legislative file. So. But you're right, it, it was. Included in your draft to the board.
The issue here is, is presently rural residential. Does this, does this fit to that designation? It does have a house on it, but. Further residential use, uh, is squeezed in between some big transportation corridors. And other, other properties that have changed the designation and the zone. Yeah. Uh, for that very reason. And even though it does have how we refer nature, it has, you know, direct access on the county maintained road. It orders to can maintain those as well as the ITD. Um. Yeah, I think it pretty much fits.
You know, like IT's comments. So this is a. When a hybrid project is done by the state. They research and recognize previous encroachments, dry ones. So I know this property has one, problem to solve has one. Uh, Esters have blocked out theirs off for decades because it's very hazardous. But the state, they're recognizing it. They built it. When they did the improvement down the hill to do for road. So it's one of those, eh, what is it? Uh, and that was covered in the comment for my TV as well. Said, yes, if you want to, it doesn't meet the spacing requirement, but again, if I, I, no. That would take care of itself. So. The access comes off of Duffer, East Duffer or the old highway. Much slower and safer than try to. Get off the highway. All right, um. Oh, let's see. Any further thoughts?
I, I would just say between rural residential and transition. I don't think this property is a perfect fit for either. Um, but as, as we said. Not every property is going to be a perfect fit within any one of our land use designations. And on balance, given the location, close proximity to these to ninety five in particular and two other pretty significant transportation corridors. I think on balance it fits better as transitioned. Um. So that's, that's my opinion. What it's worth.
Okay.
Director. And just a quick comment, well, um, just as a. Point to consider. So if you're hip to kind of are following um, some of the changes in the recent weeks on how the county is um. Reacting to a Supreme Court case from last year on reasoned statement analysis. So. When it comes to landy, quasi judicial land use hearings, um, we are required to make a reasoned statement. Um. When, when making a decision on those types of files. So. I've asked legal counsel to interpret that and how they apply to legislative changes to include comp plan map amendments on individual parcels. And. Right now, it's the county's position that we do not do a reasoned statement analysis for any legislative change to include these types of complan analysis. So. That's why you don't have a worksheet in front of you and you. Given this board or this commission only looks at. Legislative files, you'll never see one. So we're not required to do it for. Um, text amendments or. Um. Any other legislative zone, you know, legislative zone change, like, like what we're going to probably be working on in the near future. Or legislative complan map moments. So just a heads up, that's why you don't have one. If you were looking for it, you're packet. It's deliberately not placed.
Uh, and that, what would you look for? Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I know it's something I talked to with the other two hearing bodies, right? With the, the hearing examiner and the zoning commission and with the board. So we're including these reasoned statement worksheets for them to, to help with their deliberation. So in this case. It's the position right now that we, you know, we're not required to do those for any of these legislative files.
All right, thank you. Any further thoughts, just in general?
Um, I think generally I, I feel kind of the same way. It doesn't fit completely quite perfectly, but based on the situation, highways would insist in that area. I think it transition feels upon.
Yeah, I would agree. The only question I have was because this urban like water and sewer service that is the only kind of hook I saw that kind of. Makes, doesn't make it a slam dunk. Um, is that something we really need to worry too much about at this point though?
I, in, in my opinion, um. It's if the parcel is going to be sized smaller than two and a half acres. Cause you can have individual wild septic. Uh, pretty much in any of the zones on parcels, you know. Uh, pretty much in any of the zones on parcels, you know, on about any zone above that two and a half. So I don't believe. This situation.
I'm just saying, as I understand it, the requirements for transition. Include urban like water sewer. This does not have that. And again, at this level, I'm not sure it's appropriate. Make that a really big consideration is probably more the zone change. I'm just guessing because I'm still somewhat new. Maybe the zone change, that'd be something that says, okay, before you can get a rezone, you make sure you've got the necessary urban like water and sewer. If that's even possible at that point out there.
No, but I think it doesn't exist.
That's what I'm saying.
No, it's, if ever it's.
Well, it's not, it depends how, you know, if you look apart on definition of urban. Services, it, you know, it it's not urban that it's, it doesn't mean it has to be, this can be a pressure well.
Right, shared well, yes. Again, that this doesn't meet the criteria. And again, I I think this is perfect, perfect transition. Yeah, I just know that it's not going to meet that one little tiny hook and I don't know if that's a big deal or not. Cause I don't think it's ever going to be urban like services in that specific spot, but clearly it it's probably going to be one of those. Mixed use transition zones between them and tech across the way right there. You know, it is, let alone if ITD thing actually.
The rescue center. Rescue services.
It's, yeah, it's what's there.
Yep, absolutely.
The storage, small businesses.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this file, file AM zero 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 one dash two five. Requesting a comprehensive plan amendment for rural residential to transition on approximately three point five two acres. Generally located in section thirty two, township fifty six, Martha Range two west, voice radio in Bonner County. I don't find that it isn't, it is not in conflict with policies of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And Bonner County Vice Code is in the ready that following conclusions of law. Conclusion one, that the proposal is not in conflict with policy, Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Conclusion two, this proposal was reviewed for compliance with top twelve Bonner County Vice Code. And is found to be in compliance and conclusion three. The proposal is in accord with the purpose of the transition complete sub land use designation. Based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared, testament receipt of this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of facts and conclusions of law as set forth through the staff report. And require plenty staff to draft written findings and conclusions like this motion. Having the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking a prior. Here we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Linscott to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on file AM zero 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 one dash two five. Is there a second?
Commissioner Frankenbach, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, all for coming. And now we will go. Back to. Workshop discussion. So now, if anyone has any public comment, anything? Under the sun. Now's the time.
I just have a quick question, um, if you wouldn't identify yourself, please. Sure, uh, my name is Dan Baker, uh, longtime property owner and homeowner in Bonner County, but my residency is in Hayden Lake. I'm the president of the Hayden Lake City Council. I'm just up. Kind of on some information gathering, so, uh, the first gentleman that presented, I never got his name. I. You referred to him as commissioner, but I wasn't sure who he was, so.
That was Commissioner Brian Donkey. As you heard, they're, they're taking a little by the horns and trying to figure out what to do with that, that new statute. I'd be interesting, so. So, so you being on city council.
Yes.
You're faced with the same. Process dilemma, whatever.
Exactly.
Uh, to deal with that new state code. Yes, which is, I'm sure why you're here, it sounds. Very cool, yes. Yes, yes, I'm sure.
Do you have any words to share with us about?
Well, I have a question and a concern. How, how long is, and I haven't been following the, the uh, state. The broadband thing much, just a little bit under perfect, but what, how long is the shot clock?
There is a.
I thought, I thought it had been qualified.
It is, it is qualified.
No, I, I don't understand that, but then that puts into effect the shot clock.
Right, depending on the type of file and the site. I, I don't, I don't have it committed to memory.
For sixty days. Oh, right, um, yeah, so sixty days is for a small co-location. Small wires facility and new equipment ninety days. To co-locate a facility with. Other than a small wireless facility to exist with ninety days.
Okay.
So it's only facility on the small wireless hundred fifty days.
So my concern is. Right, it's not going to move fast enough to have something in place by July one, obviously.
Well, true, that part.
But now there's a, that leaves this grand opportunity for.
Oh, yeah.
People to come in and make their applications, knowing that they're going to get approved no matter what, and it. Has that been taken into consideration? It, it may be a, a stopgap. Uh, code amendment to just. A Band-Aid until. It just worth considering. I realize it's more complex than that, but.
Eric, does that, I read through that yesterday. Doesn't it declare emergency at the end of it?
Yes, that's why they were able to have the July first effectiveness. Cause otherwise it would have been the first of the year, right?
You see, you see that with most of those. The APA was an emergency as well. It was adopted. Yeah, so with a lot of those where they want them to come into effect July one, they declare.
Clearly, clearly that was not a consideration.
Or, or, or it was.
Exact statement six five is. An emergency existing therefore, which emergency is hereby declared to exist, this actually be full force. And affect owner.
Yeah, the emergency is we need to ram these things through.
Well, you see, they have the same thing on a, on a change to how we process public records requests. So they, they have that declares emergency. You see that with most of those legislative changes, so. The, the most of, the most impactful one is how fast we have to deem an application complete or incomplete, which I believe is just ten days. Where our current code gives us thirty. I know it's less time than what we currently have codified in our code.
And did you interpret or do you interpret it to mean that the shot clock doesn't start until you guys say we have a complete application?
Absolutely. So if we deem it incomplete, within that twenty one days, we still meet the statute. Say, hey, we, we're missing X, Y, and Z from you. Let's say they fill out an incomplete application, we can kick it back and say.
If an application is in police, city, county, or every district. Twenty one business days. So it's business days, it gives you a little extra thing.
Okay, now, so we're still in the public comment period, so Suzanne. If you would unmute, there you go. Hello.
Thank you. Yes, um, so for the commission, I just want to let you know I have several empirical articles. Over the next few days, what I'll do is I'll go up to the website and get all your email addresses and send it over to you. It's a lot of things to read. I just wanted to let you know ahead of time before you get it and what to look for. And then, um, something for Director to, to be able to think about, because I was thinking about this today. Um, and not to, not to put a negative spin on it, but I think it's great that you're going to ask for all this data to come across. And then what's going to happen is that the cell tower folks, they're going to have their telecommunications specialist and their geophysicist and everybody else. Whom will you have on your side? If you want to challenge it. You see what I'm saying? It's kind of like me telling my doctor, well, dude, I don't think you know what you're talking about. Yet he's got the medical schooling and the, and the, and the background. So I, I'm not saying that you can't challenge it. Just kind of think about how you'll go about challenging the data if in fact that's, that's an avenue. So thanks for the opportunity. Have a great night.
Thank you, Suzanne. Right, okay, so that's. Same vein, I brought it up. I think there needs to be something in there, some level of review of. Independent. Expert. Specialist, whatever, engineer. So, uh. Any further, so we're. Okay, that, we'll get down to the, uh. The communication towers at the end of, almost at the end of this, but right now. Can you bring up the, the task list that was?
Yes.
I printed it out, but I didn't.
It was emailed to you and it's also in your drive under taste. And I made a couple of adjustments to this while I was here.
Oh.
I mean, files. And it's just updating the status of these, because this was created a couple of weeks ago. Probably like three or four weeks ago, and then I presented this to the board in an update meeting recently. And asked them to essentially give me the blessing as a board, because. It was initially approved by Commissioner Donkey as the liaison of planning, and then he wanted me to present it to the remainder of the board.
Question for you, Jake. Maybe you should have asked Christian or Donkey, Donkey when he was here, but. I've never been able to quite understand difference between the urgency and the priority.
Okay.
Yeah, good question. Yeah.
So you, you have like a. The typical school of thought on an urgency priority list, right? So if something is super urgent, needs to be done today versus it's a priority. Um, I have like a chart that I give to all my planners when it comes to urgency priority, right? So.
You need a chart to understand it?
Yeah, it makes a lot more sense visually, to be honest. Um. Some things are a, a lower priority, but a higher urgency, like.
It's, it's no big thing. We're not going to get the answer tonight. I just wasn't sure if maybe. But he introduced this.
So this, so you have changed the numbers in the columns, um.
This is, um.
So what's our number, our number one urgency and priority is?
It came from, this came from President Eisenhower, sorry, of something I learned.
It's the one we can't do anything about right now.
Urgency and importance, urgency priority. Yeah, if this looks familiar at all, this is your urgency priority matrix, what they're called. It's like when something.
So we've got the option to delete some of these? Did I read that?
Yeah, delegation is another aspect of that. So I updated this because as you guys know, the comp plan implementation component, that's already gone through a, um, a workshop and a. Uh, a hearing with this body and it's on the board now. Um, I, I'm trying to get it scheduled. With that and the land use component workshop. It sounds like we don't have that many Board of Equalization appeals. Heard it's less than ten. So what? And the, the due date is Monday. The board has blocked out like two weeks of their time to, to take Board of Equalization appeals. Which is a statutory requirement. They have to spend all of their available time to process those. Um, in years past, they get as many as, you know, tens, like thirty, forty, fifty. Um, given this year, those seem to be a whole lot, but we'll see by Monday. So after next week, um, I'm going to meet with their admin again and see if I can. Given that the cutoff is Monday, uh, take one of those afternoons and then all I do know is it's scheduled, so hopefully we can do it in July rather than mid August. Um, the title's twelve, chapter six changes. Uh, you've workshopped it, you've given us, uh. Your input on it, staff's, um, been processing it. I just needed to make the time to finalize the draft. Same thing with the chapters one and two. Um, and then the RV park. Uh, use table change, you hold, you held the hearing, the board's hearing, I believe is, is it next week or week after? It's on the twenty seventh. Is that right? Twenty seventh is the board's hearing on the RV park. I think it's the only hearing we have with the board this, or the last, last hearing this month. Um, and then the, the next highest priority to the board place is on the House Bill one eighty, as you guys discussed. Earlier and it's later on the agenda. Um, it sounds like the board is going to take. The first pass at this with some outside legal counsel and so after the workshop we had with them, I think it was last week. Um, I think at that, at that time, I was decided not to just put a burden on you guys, but to give you a more, more polished, complete version to, to review, so. Then you're left with the last two things on this, um, place, which is. Title twelve, chapter three zoning description and land use table review. That includes the, the uses. Um. And I believe I've talked about, uh, I've started drafting, or at least I pulled down some, some together of a. An event venue use with some specific standards. I think that should be on the list when we take a look at these use tables. Um, and that is a, I understand this is a, a mountain to, to review, the use tables and the. The zoning descriptions. Um, if you want to break that down into subtasks, I think it would probably be appropriate. And then the title eleven review, which has been. The, uh, the board, the county commissioner did a review of it and it's on staff to. They gave us a lot to work on on that, so we're hoping this.
Those last two seem like they'd be in the delete quadrant. Those last two seem like they'd be in the delete quadrant.
No.
I will bring up, if, if anybody didn't watch the B O C C's hearing on these topics. The, there was a little bit of a warning about us going too far into the zoning descriptions from use table rewrites. Given that they have an approval already done in the land use component already, so. Warning, they kind of just made sure that we're aware, hey, we go too far down that path, there could be some changes coming around. The B O C C that might negate any work we do in that area, so just something.
I think it's just, it's just good, good thing to recall or remember as we craft these. Don't, don't get too. Tied to the land use restrictions as they've been proposed until the board makes a decision on those in late August. I think. Yeah, well, well, see.
When, when does that go on? August, the hearing on that, on the land use component is August when?
I think it's the twenty third. I don't think we could do it on the seventeenth.
It was, it was continued.
But that, that date didn't work.
So how do you, do you have to reopen the meeting to?
Yes, so it was continued. We're going to republish it and hold it later in the month. That's really all we, that's what we'll need to do is do a new publishing. Um, I want to say it's the twenty third. I could be wrong in the date, so.
So the last column over there is, I think, the banner there is due date.
Yeah.
Why are those? For instance, if there's a, a B O C C hearing on title trip twelve, chapter three, which is coming up on the twenty seventh. What's the seven sixteen due date?
I don't know. The commissioner has filled that in, so. We'll make sure if they continue it, then we'll get done by the seventeenth and our written decision.
This is still a work in progress.
By the dates over there.
Well, I, I mean, I think. On that one, I think we're done. I mean, unless they have a problem and they want to send it back to.
Everything, uh, above the black line isn't on your plate right now. Some of those will come back to you guys for a hearing.
Yeah.
But you've done the majority of the work already completed, other than a hearing on a couple of those items.
We don't have any. I mean, the high priority item, we don't have yet.
Yep.
And then the last two are very low for us. So we're on vacation until October.
No. I think you just go to the next priority, right? So you go to.
That's what I was going to say. I think we, I, we should start some pattern, looking at the land use tables.
I, I think that's what we get from this.
All in the county, so it's, uh, yeah, we need to do.
But with the caveat that we don't want to move too fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's going to take a while to just understand what's there, really, and how they interact. That's the biggest thing that we've discovered over the hearings, well. But if you look at note twenty three on the table. Yeah, it just goes, and a.
As, as we move into this. Doing this big gold chunk of stuff. For those newbies on the. Vote here. You old timers have a recommendation for how best we go about delving into this whole land use designations and zoning and. Yeah, you guys have done it a couple of times probably in your ten years.
It's all in the code. So you got to get real familiar with what the code says. And these use tables are key in the whole thing, because. It's just it, here's under the zone, here's the uses, and here's, here's the allowances permitted or conditional or not at all. But then, under each use table is all these notes. Oh, one through forty seven, I think is the latest one. And you gotta look at those and then figure out what they mean and how they apply. And how they, how they interact with others. So it, it's very complex. But it's, I don't know, if any other way, it's always been. We get a good explanation of all that during staff, uh, review or staff report. But still, I, I think it's incumbent on us to, to really understand it as much as we possibly can. So, yeah, it's not something, a lot of reading and. I, I thought. And, and we brought this up from time to time, while we all remember such and such a file. That was dealing with that issue, could we get that to look at again? And they're, they're buried in the system somewhere. They're not any longer under the, uh, active, uh, project files. Some of them, most of them are, I mean, from four or five years ago, they're.
No.
They're buried. They can be brought up, but, uh. So I, I don't know, it's hard. That, that might be helpful. So I I don't know, it's hard, that that might be helpful. It's just to think even through where you're looking at the use table, so how would those use tables come into play? In those decisions. And even just a a shortlist, maybe we'll hear our files that dealt with that. Still gonna be very complex to carry those out of the pile. But I I can see some benefit. Refresh memories or receive new.
Yeah, I think we started, take like conditional use permits is a really good example of what's been applied for, what's been the demand on conditional use permit, so. I we created one report during the comp plan. Land use analysis, right? I think we even mapped out uh some of those, so looking back further, if you. We have, we have some records on like spreadsheets that go back to the. Mid two thousands, I want to say, they kept everything on paper documents, each each file was paper. You ever walking down um the the hallway in in the second floor and you feel the buckle, it's because there was so much paper it buckled before.
Yeah.
And so that a lot of that's been scanned or either scanned or, yeah. And a lot of it was added to these spreadsheets, so some of it we can pull from that.
I wonder if a way to to start on that title twelve, chapter three. Without getting too far ahead of whatever the BOCC might end up doing. Would it just be to start to mark up what's there with our comments and thoughts about what needs to change? And not spend too much, I mean, at this point, we shouldn't be trying to draft final language, we're finding details of the language that. That should come later, but at least start to get just. You know, what do we, what do we think needs to change? And if we all maybe could go through and. Based on what we have recommended to the BOCC, go through the that section of the code and start to mark it up with our thoughts. I mean, a way to get started anyway.
Is there any plan by the planning staff to do what you guys have done in? Like with the MLDs, are you guys going to go through and make any markups before it comes to us, or are we delving in?
We work for you guys, so as much as involvement you want me to be, like I'm I'm happy to help, so.
Just get it done and tell us what if.
Sure, I'll I'll craft the perfect code, right?
So could you pull a that section of the code out into a Word file? That we could work with?
Okay, um so I will. I'll probably craft, uh I'm sure there's been a couple of changes. I had created like a a nice word doc.
Something we can mark up.
Cause I know when you pull it out of the off the code database. I went through and on a Friday afternoon and fixed all the formatting and it's in your guys' drive somewhere, so I'll get, I'll find that and go back over to your.
In all seriousness, would it be a huge pain in the butt, you back off of what was already mentioned? To maybe have someone go through and make notes when you finish with that about based on the files, cause I I would know where to go find some of the old files. Would it be tough to have someone on your staff go through there and maybe? Quickly go back through all the files that have happened in the last. Ten years or whatever it is, and just insert some notes about, hey, we've had a problem with this particular. Thing of that particular thing, that's inappropriate.
One is, like I mentioned, event venues would be one of those uses that we see, we've issued a number of CUPs or had a lot of interest where. We need to craft specific uses and add to use tables either, so. That's really what I want to get to at this meeting today is, what's the process we want to go through? So do you want to look at just the zoning descriptions first, craft what you want those to be, or do you want to review those and? Suggest some edit some changes to the use tables? One thing you get stuck in is as they're changing the zoning descriptions, you're going to continue to think about the uses. And what they are today, so it might be relevant to review those at the same time and say, okay, this is how we want this zone to look. And here's the specific uses we want there, here's the conditional ones and here's the permitted outright, so.
Yeah, because a lot of that came up even in the designation discussions, unless it does that include this use, this is the land use. And then the zone, but. So yes, I I think that'd be appropriate.
And then from there. And then from there, when do you want to and uh get to the map? And then the public involvement side of it, when do, what type of public involvement process do we want? I suggest that. You get to a final draft of. Want, you don't really want to piecemeal this, because it's just one at a time, so I think a review of the land use description, or sorry, the. Stuck in it, so you guys are, the zoning descriptions, the the changes to the tables. And then the map itself, and then we do a similar round robin, maybe not as many places, we can take the data we got with the the most. Yeah, I I have the numbers of how many people attended, um or if you, if you want to go back to all the same places, we can, so.
I don't envision this taking near as long as land use.
You're a dream. You're a dreamer. I would, can I just suggest that you at least look back on litigation? Maybe Jake can provide some information.
Yeah, that's that's all part of it, what's happening.
See any way of doing it different than the way it is?
Not sure you, what what do you?
Oh, I don't know, a whole different format, or just sticking kind of with the baseline.
Step up the microphone, that's one that listens to these things. You'd rather not speak then?
So in, if you look at how they did it in two thousand and five. When they adopted the comp plan in oh five, it took them three years to redo them. If the entire, they started with the entirety, scrapped the whole code and rewrite, so it took them three and a half years to do that, with the zoning map. And then after that, they went through and amended the zoning map probably for another two years, as they had large groups come in and request changes, because they didn't like it. So uh if you want to go through that process, but that's just the historical, uh if you want to do a complete rewrite, I don't think it's. I mean, there's some merit in reviewing chapters at a time, um and a lot of those kind of go hand in hand. We just did a fairly in-depth review of chapter six, but there's still additional things I'm sure in there that need to be revised, so.
So piggybacking off of your comment, because I think it's a good one. I I was gonna say. Let's let's focus on the historical files, because I mean, that might be interesting, but that's very tedious. I'm, I would guess that you and your staff have a pretty good idea. Of where in the code today you would point to and say, we've had. Interpretation problems with this section and that section and that section, and we've had. Maybe legal problems with some sections, which probably are closely related, where you have. Maybe iffy interpretations, I bet if you guys sat down for an afternoon, you could come up with a good list of places where we really ought to focus.
A CUP slopes of the the water.
You know where you have problems.
Public utility facilities. Yeah, I can I can give you a list.
Probably right off the top of your head.
Actually, Swanny started creating a list. We, it's called BCRC issues or problems or something, so. It's a, it's a decent one, a lot, some of those have been resolved.
That'd be a good thing to look at.
And I think it would, there's some merit in going back and looking at um litigation files, even though kind of that judicial side has changed a bit, so. Where we we won cases years ago, we would probably lose today in front of the court, so.
So then the question is, when do we start that in in uh? Concentrated effort.
It's your highest priority right now, right? I think that the title eleven stuff, that's on staff and we have a lot of that, and then we'll get that to, like I said, I think by this fall and. Those will go hand in hand with some of the title twelve, because it's really the im- implementation on the individual properties and individual structure level. So um you'll probably, we'll we'll go through and do the red line version of it, and it was a complete review and overhaul by the board, so. There's a lot there that needs to be revised. But if you guys focus on the title twelve, as I mentioned, the the process so that we can put together some kind of flowchart, so people understand. The process we're going to go through and when when we want the really robust public input. Um usually, I think your experience um is that we come up with a a. I wouldn't say a final draft, but a decent draft and say, okay, please nit nitpick this, has some thick skin about it and then ask for the input on it. And then revise um based on that input.
I I personally think that's, that works well, I think it worked well for us so far in the comp plan. Um it helps for to give the public something to focus on, to give comments to or against.
We definitely needed to focus too, otherwise we just got ramble and ramble.
Right, right.
So we were. Still looking for, what are we going to do on, because that is our. Action item below is what's the agenda and agenda items for July first.
Did you, uh, does the commission want to discuss anymore of that house bill? I think we kind of beat that.
As I'm sitting here, I remember someone used the word necessary. Um where is that found, I don't think that's in.
Yeah, it is.
Where's that?
Um look in the, the. Chapter four um is what that's talking about. So if you look in uh development standards for cell towers. Uh specific use. Four eight eight.
Four eight eight.
Yeah.
Through the hearings, there have been on those files. They were asked to show the necessity for.
Yeah, the zoning commission shall consider the public convenience and necessity of the communication hour. Like I said, it's fairly subjective, the standard is.
There we go, that's kind of the something, we we done that out of the application for zone change, if had assessed. Yeah, that's right, so we had to change that. That would be a good one.
Well, that that's going to be rewritten by the board itself, so. The four eight eight is going to be a complete overhaul. The last draft that Commissioner Donkey showed was several pages long, I would say it was ten or.
Well, that's interesting, because you know, like. You know, federal laws and everything going on with that, and what did you call it?
Well, this, the 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 relevant federal law, a lot of the relevant federal law comes from the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety six. And it and it does impose constraints on what local governments, state and local governments can do. I'm not an attorney, but I might recommend that people avoid talking about health and safety. Because you build a foundation that can be challenged, because that's actually the area that state and local governments are prohibited from regulating, based on. Based on health and safety.
It's great, because all of title twelve is under the the idea of regulating.
So, but um. So. I'm sorry. Yeah, so um. But it's, yeah, it's Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety six. No, and it's been tested in the courts quite extensively, so. From my perspective, one of my concerns will be, I don't think, I would like to put the county taxpayers in the position of having to pay to fight that battle. You're going up to get some deep pockets.
Right, because also.
It's been tested.
I don't turn here, but. An applicant who's denied, they don't have to go to state court, they go federal court, but that's enough. And uh. Okay, uh following the procedure here, so.
What about scheduling, I guess one of the things that might help is, I don't know, you could give us some visibility, do we have any other hearings coming up, anything else that's? Yeah, gonna pop up in the next couple of months that we need to be aware of.
Make sure staff updates, what's happening calendar wise. I know, looking at the reader board in lobby. It doesn't mention a planning commission meeting until the second, the third week of July, nothing first. I don't know why, because we got a meeting on July first, right?
Think so, yeah. Let me look at your guys' calendar. So we have a hearing on the fifteenth of July, one hearing. Yes, and then you'll have. I can probably meet the fifteen for those two text amendments, if I can get them noticing now, maybe it'll be later in July, so. I'm out for the next week, starting tomorrow, so I won't, I won't work on it at least until.
Potentially, they were going to be working ops, land use and going through the board.
As I mentioned, I'm I'm, I'd like to essentially steal one of their BOE slots uh in mid to late July. Rather than waiting until August to work on it.
First one is potentially tomorrow, that's not.
No, that's not.
Do you say the RV park board amendment is on July twenty seventh?
I think it's June twenty third. You know, that's not writing.
Twenty seventh is Friday. I would say, I would say about thirty.
Yeah, because the board's not meeting the first half of July for land use, because of BOEs, they canceled the. Regulators regularly scheduled meetings.
So we don't have any, right now, we don't have any hearings.
You have one, and then like I said, those two text amendments, it'll likely be July or early August. Let me look at your guys' published calendar to see. Yeah, July first and fifteenth is when, and then August fifth and nineteenth. So those text amendments will likely be August fifth. I don't think the board wants any more in August, so I'll take it to them in September, so I think that'll work out well.
For the record, Commissioner Love has left the meeting, and we still have a. Bunch of us here.
Still have a corner.
We're still in session. Okay, so.
So by next meeting, what is it, you guys want staff to compile some? Problem, specific problems from the code, maybe just areas of focus. Um of of issues we've had and other things that need to be revised, specifically around chapters three and four, right?
You're gonna go back first and find the word version of the file.
I'll get that.
Then you can start inserting comments right in there. We can all add all of our comments in there.
Yeah, I'll I'll drop it in your drive on the, just on one page, the front page.
Specifically, our homework is to look that over and just start getting more familiar with it.
And I think to the extent people want to to make comments in there about areas you think they need to change.
Even if it's raising a question, what is this?
Right, right, yeah. This is unclear.
It's like right now, we're calling wedding venues under church community facility type.
Like I said, a venue, wedding venue code really is a a high need in my book. So I've done some preliminary homework on it and found some codes that we can use as some base to review. Uh there was some good ones from like Florida and Pennsylvania, nothing from the West Coast that I could find. It was nothing really robust, but I'm, if you find something, feel free to send it over. Yeah, looking for it right now, I haven't worked on it in a few weeks, it's been.
And then is somebody going to take the action to come up with? Not sure how it was described, but a a plan of action, a timeline? Who brought that up, the suggestion, was that you Jake?
Yep, that that was my initial thought is what process do we want to go by?
We need to define time and time and how.
An action plan related to this specifically.
That would be good, so think that through, potentially over the next two weeks. And come in prepared to. Give it a shot.
So on this table from the VOCC on our priorities, when they talk about. Title twelve, channel three zoning, does that, in your mind, Jake, does that include doing the zoning map?
So I I put this. Gave it to the board as like items that you've all discussed as things you wanted to work on. So and other things that have been delegated to this commission to to consider and start working on. I had some frustrations from some members of this commission, I won't name names. Um they said, well, what is it, what should we be working on? The board hasn't given us any direction, so that was me seeking direction on your behalf, on your behalf. So right now, essentially what we've found is. You've completed everything they've asked you to and tasked you with so far, so now it's back on to the stuff you want to work on, so chapters three and four was next on the docket to consider and work on.
I I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at, the purpose for asking the question is. That that item has a due date of ten twenty two. Is that supposed to include getting the zoning map all buttoned up?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And I I wouldn't say that's a hard date, I think that's a, and I I found the word doc, it's in your doc, it's in your.
Okay, okay.
We're, that's part of my question to that.
That ought to go on the list, quite honestly.
Yeah, right, yeah, and I think we can add stuff to that working draft of of what you want to work on. Um that priority list, like I said, it it came from the board, I, it was for your direction, I think from there, we can expand upon it as.
I'm just trying to understand the scope of that, to see how do we plan it to hit a ten twenty two end date or something reasonably close to that. And if we go to the zoning map.
And we're also making the assumption that the board adopts the land use component. And we're also making the assumption that the board adopts the land use component by ten twenty two, which, so.
Well, no, I I I don't, I don't agree with that. I think in order for us to be done with that by ten twenty two, they have to adopt the land use component by like sometime in August. Right, cuz we need to know what that is, so we can get serious about spreading the new goals.
It it looks like I've gone through and highlighted the number of sections in this already. One is like caretaker's residence, cuz it's in two different use tables, and the uses are different in both. So it's already conflicting in the use tables. It's only been utilized, I think, twice in the last four years that I can recall. So it's one of those, it looks like it was an A D U code without any standard, so it might be just. Strike it all together and just get rid of the code, so that that's kind of what it looks like. How it also reads is like the single family dwelling with an associated use, like a um. A mini storage with a single family dwelling, which is already permitted in the code, so why have another use that called the same thing, so. Um, I would say we scrap it. That's just one example, there are dozens, as I highlighted through this. It looks like September, October last year, I went through and um highlighted some spots, but I can definitely do a more.
Is that an addition, what you did in addition to what Swanny did, cuz she.
Yeah, this is just my my initial blush, or you know, my initial review of this. And she didn't focus specifically on these chapters, she went mostly in chapter six, there was a lot of changes, which we've we've addressed a lot of those in this revision.
Alright, uh, let's see. So, so we've kinda built what's gonna happen on the first. Question again, in the stuff that was forwarded to us, these these this table. Has all the acreages and the number. These are the latest numbers.
So that came out of the land use component.
This is right out.
Yeah, that's something Alan asked for is a, how many, how many? Like, what's the impact of this as to the number of of parcels and the acreage of parcels, so. I just took the numbers we put together from the land. Yeah, he was asking if if you remove. If you remove cell towers from all of the. What certain zones, like what's the percentage impacts? Rather than ask, answer the specific question. I just gave you the the breakdown of percentages of, if you remove any a use in any of the zones, what, you know, what's the percentage impact, so let's say we. Remove duplexes from the Alpine zone, what percentage of the county is affected by that? Right, so that gives you that answer, and it might be a a good thing to consider as we look at these use.
I know, cuz there was some, that one error that was discovered in the in the. Put the wrong number out there.
Yep, so that's with the updated numbers, absolutely.
And one thing was kind of interesting, you got the other second page there. Yeah, sorta. Sorta, kinda sorta? Is that total acreage by zones in all those zones we have? Three hundred thirty nine thousand six hundred seventy nine acre.
Well, that that's discounting production timberland and state and federal land. Exactly, so if you want me to include those back in, I could rework that. This is really looking at private private property.
But it was kind of interesting that all those zones from forest, ag, forest, rural, rec suburban, industrial, commercial. Yeah, there's only three hundred thirty nine thousand acres to count.
Well, that's, production timber is impacted by your guys' decisions, right? And we discounted that, given that it's not really a. There's not a whole lot of residential use and other other uses on that outside of timber.
So, refresh my memory, what's your best guess of when the land use component will be approved? Will will be approved, cuz I think we need to, we, if if we're gonna work on a schedule. Yeah, I think we need to have, at least work off of an assumption of this is when the land use component is gonna be final. So at that point in time, we can really begin to seriously finalize language in the code. I I don't, I wouldn't wanna get too far down the road, looking at really detailed language before that.
I stopped making um guestimates, we're not boards and make decisions specifically on land use. It's scheduled for July or August um with a workshop, I think we'll know a lot more after the workshop as to how far the board. Gets in their rewrites of what changes they want.
I thought there was supposed to be a workshop in July, and then the continued period in August. So does anything happen in July?
We're, like I said, we're, I'm trying to get penciled in for a workshop. But given that the B O E situation, Board of Equalization situation, I I don't know. Um, what their availability is, and I'll know next week.
So you have a workshop in August?
I think we have one penciled in in August, right before the hearing, I'd rather do that in July.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, and then the one in August.
And when's the hearing? Twenty eight, is that the one that's?
I think it's the gonna be the twenty seven. That's their normal scheduled hearing for them is August twenty seven. I think we initially had it for the thirteenth, but for some reason, we already had some. Several hearing items scheduled that day, or there's something else that they that they were scheduled for that wouldn't work or something along those lines.
They're still pretty adamant on having two workshops.
Okay, so. I gotta say, uh, uh, to me, that makes ten twenty two problematic.
Yeah, I wouldn't have, like I said, that's a soft date.
Is that, that only gives us like four meetings maybe after they finalize it.
There's another thing to consider in there, folks, uh. How many, how many of us, our terms are up in September?
Well, it's at least two.
No, I I think it rotates to to each year.
You guys made decisions yet?
And there just might be a fourth. There just might be a fourth, so I, I, that's that's dire prediction for the commission. Uh, I don't. So all the things to happen at once.
Can you go back and tell the commissioners, like send an email or the server, or if you wait till the next update in nature, how does it work?
In order, like the board accounting commissioners?
What they're saying on the land, you think like to have that finalized, I mean, you share.
During the weekly update of planning?
Um, generally, I wait till the update meeting to kinda discuss, so the board has a lot on their plate, I I'm not sure what actionable item.
I guess there's a way they're gonna. No, I would say, we 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 should, I mean, I would look at the the August twenty seventh date as the best case. And it's not likely to happen. And even then, it's not gonna result in anything that, if we're lucky to see them talk about it by them once, that's not gonna be. Anything close to being done and passed by. So. That's why I raised the issue, that I don't think the October twenty second date is realistic, even without thinking about potential changeover. Which is gonna throw a big multi wrench into the group.
If I can get two workshops scheduled, it's more likely to get approved on. I know late August, early September, they're gonna have a really controversial file for a conditional use permit, that's gonna take a lot of their time as well. Looking at other.
From our perspective, if we wanna work on a schedule. This was my point I was trying to make earlier, we we probably need to make some kind of assumption about when we think we're gonna have a final land use component. Cuz cuz that's likely to end up being a pacing item. For our work.
There may be some things that we could deal with without that, but if. That thing is gonna. We hope to change the world.
So, I'm not sure if that's helpful or not, I mean, if we wanted, that's why I asked about the dates and so forth, I mean. You could put a schedule together based on the best case that it's final at the end of end of August and. Work off of that assumption and then make adjustments as it as it changes. Sounds good, I don't know any other way to do it. Personally, I don't, I don't think I'm prepared to talk about a schedule a whole lot, it's something I'd like to think about, maybe. Maybe we could talk about it at our next meeting.
I know when we get, we get into the specific uses and crafting standards for those, we're gonna get a lot of public input. So I know there's, like, any any one of those, you're gonna get a lot of public input. So I I appreciate your optimism, Mr. Lindstall, but. Given my experience on this, I I think it's gonna be. Especially when you get into those specific uses and the standards that apply to them, it's gonna become um. So by next meeting, I will. I'll start on the review, the next meeting is when? The first first. Do my best. I I'm I'm not back until the twenty sixth, so then I only have like three working days before that meeting, so.
You work while you're on vacation, right?
No, not this time. If it's if it's like bomb gun for military leave, yeah, I'll work in the evenings, but not not this.
Yeah, somebody else would be doing.
Okay, so I will um, I'll delegate some of that while I'm out, and then. Um, we'll set some time aside to get some draft and some comments on that, that word doc I submitted to you, feel free to. Review that in the meantime and add your own comments to it, and then um. We'll, we'll start an attentive schedule at the next meeting, is that what I'm hearing?
Okay, anything else, uh, the other comments from the department or?
So, for some of these meetings, I put together meeting packets of information. Um, if this commission wants me to continue to put together meeting packets, the. The timeframe in which the information has to get to me to create the packet and get it in front of the public has to be established, cuz. Some things happen, either staff works on it the day before or the day of, or it comes in from an outside party that's been working on it the day before the day of, so. If you want me to continue to post stuff available to the public, I get demands from the public every now and again on posting information. If you think that's important, or if you want me to continue that practice, I'm happy to, um, if you want to wait until we. Put something out for a public review, that's that's fine as well, I'm just, some direction would be nice.
They all think. Well, you know, early on in some of these drafts, what we're gonna be doing, it's, you know, it's so early. I understand the public question, what we're up to. Um, but if we're two, three months out from even having a workshop on it. I don't know. Yeah, seems to be.
I agree.
Pretty much always taking the stance, they're our workshops, we're the ones who are looking at it in order to brush it up to some form where then could be. Put out to the public, otherwise, who knows, it could change forty times.
Yeah, you spin your wheels.
If something's coming in, for instance, for the hearing, just as early as we get it. Just within two weeks, really, that's that's appropriate and really necessary, I know. You know, even today, it just just so happens that the second Tuesday of every month for the next four months, I'm. Totally busy in the morning, so I don't have a chance to even look at that file. At all on on that Tuesday, it's the day before, and nothing came in. And it comes in on Tuesday morning or something, I'm stuck, so that's my own situation, but. Maybe somebody else is in the same boat. Literally, I was in the boat this morning, I did. Anyway.
Um, we can, as we come up with the drafts of these, um, we can do similar to what we've done with the land use component and other components where we. Come up with version one, version two, and I can publish those on some website, or I can add them in as a packet of information on the calendar. Once you kinda dictate saying, hey, this is, this is good, let's let's publish this.
Yeah, I I think that's, it's gotta be that way, there's just too much stuff out there. Okay. Good in the order? Alright, here's the gavels.